But before I do, I think congratulations are in order to Mr. May for being the recipient of the 2020 Professional Planner of the Year Award. Congratulations, Mr. May.
Thank you, sir.
You make us proud.
I'm happy to serve.
All right. Okay, so I am required to read this prepared message. I am calling this December the 10th, 2020 Meeting of the Brockton Planning Board to order. My name is Bob Pelagi, and I am Chair of the Board. This meeting is being recorded in accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law General Law, Chapter 30, Section 20 relating to the 2020 Noble Coronavirus Outbreak Emergency, that December 10th, 2020 Public Meeting of the Brockton Planning Board shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. Real-time public participation and comment can be addressed to the planning board utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software with a remote access. This application will allow users to view the meeting and send a comment or a question to the Chair via the question and answer function. Submitted text comments will be read into the re-record at the appropriate points in the meeting. For those of you joining us by phone who want to ask a question, press star nine to raise your hand. A copy of the recorded, a copy of the recording and transcript will be posted to the city's webpage within 72 hours. All votes will be done via roll call to ensure count accuracy. Quorum call, let's see, quorum call. Board members, please respond in the affirmative to indicate your attendance at this meeting. Larry Hassan?
Here.
Tony Gonzalez?
Here.
Craig Peanut? Not in attendance at this time.
He's here.
Oh, he's here. Good evening, sir. Happy to have you aboard. He is in the affirmative. Reggie Thomas?
Here.
And Bob Pelagi is here. With five members voting in the affirmative, I declare we have a quorum. Okay, so moving along the agenda for tonight's meeting. All right, so we have our regular housekeeping items, the administrative items. We've got acceptance of minutes. We've also got, I guess, we have one A in our plan, subdivision plans into a lot releases. We'll get to those. And then we have, let's see, eight agenda items, I think three of which have continued. But in any case, just quickly, the eight agenda items for this evening are, number one, definitive subdivision property is at Lot 2 Belgravia Avenue. It's a four-lot residential subdivision. Silver Engineering, that project has been continued to February the 2nd. Number two, definitive subdivision property is at 678 East Street. It's a two-lot subdivision. It's a municipal, multi-municipal subdivision, Brockton and East Bridgewater. But the portion that's in Brockton is a two-lot residential subdivision. That's Benjamin Carroll's applicant, and Mundon Engineering is the engineer representative. Item three is a preliminary subdivision. That's map 74, plots 18, Market Street, and 1-4 Copland Street is a two-lot residential subdivision. That's Juan Tortures and Land Surveys is the surveyor engineer. That has been continued to January the 5th. Item four, preliminary subdivision property is at 42 Quincy Street. It's a five-lot residential subdivision. Springfield Ventures Realty Trust is the owner, and that has been continued to January the 5th, '21 as well. Five is a site plan approval. Let's see, the property is at plot 383 Quincy Street. Applicant is Mike Mather. Item six is site plan approval. Property is at 4 Main Street, retail marijuana. Applicant is Atlantic. Medicinal Partners representative is attorney Phil Silverman. Item seven, site plan approval. Property is at 40 Means Avenue. Applicant is Champion City Recovery. Representative is Green Seal Environmental. Item eight is site plan approval. Property is at 119-015 Oak Hill Way. Applicant is LJDE, or if you like, LDJE. I see it both ways. Represent a strong point, engineering. Okay, so we have, does everybody have a copy of the minutes of the November the 4th meeting? And if you have any comments or changes or revisions?
Motion to approve the minutes as presented.
A second, please.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Roll call vote. Craig Peanut?
Yes.
Reggie Thomas?
Dan was absent.
I'm sorry?
I was absent last meeting, abstaining.
Oh, I'm sorry. He's abstaining from the vote. Thank you. Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
Larry Hassan?
Yes.
And Bob Pelagi is a yes, so that's approved. And I think, Pam, we've got a, looks like we've got one A in our.
We do. And Risa, do you want to take this?
Did we lose her? Oh, no, there she is. No, she's there.
She's got on mute.
Sorry. So let me pull it up.
So, Risa, do you want to make a quick presentation on that A in our, please, 76 South Street?
Yes. So for 76 South Street, the applicant is proposing the division of Lot 083-015 facing Warren Street. And the Massachusetts General Law, according to Chapter 41, Section 81P, the, I'm going to read it to you so it makes more sense. The key to the exception for A in our plans is frontage for each lot created. If all lots do not have their requisite frontage, the plan shows a subdivision and must go through the full review process. So the applicant does not meet lot frontage. He's proposing 8750 for Lot A and Lot B 5925, and this is in the zone R2, which is the, which the frontage is required to be 100 feet.
So basically, what he's creating, if I'm understanding the point correctly, he's attempting to create through the vehicle of an A in our, two substandard lots, two lots that don't meet the minimum frontage in that zoning district, which is 100 feet, I believe.
Yes. This is already an existing conforming lot, but with the proposing of dividing the two lots, it makes both the lots non-conforming.
Okay. So I think, I think the use of the attempt, of the application of a 40, of an A in our plan is the wrong concept, if he's looking to.
Right, this becomes a subdivision.
Yeah, he's got to, yeah, I think it's a subdivision, yes. All right, well, without further ado, well, okay, so does anybody else have any other comments? Any other board members have any other comments?
Yeah, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
On the plan that I'm looking at, and they have it noted as Lot A, by my.
Pardon me, Larry. Rob, could you please, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Larry, I'm sorry. Rob, could you bring the plan up on the screen, please? Do you have that ability? Do you have that?
Let me see, sir. Hang on just a second.
Your time. Patriots don't start till eight.
Oh, getting adjourned.
There you go. Can you see that, Bob?
I certainly can, yes.
Lot A, that's an existing property. It's a two-family, and where they're looking to make Lot B the additional lot, that is a parking lot now, which I'm assuming is for the two families. So if they take away that parking lot, does that do anything to Lot A as far as having enough parking for a two-family dwelling? That's my question on that, too, as well.
That's a good observation, and it may well, it may well, Larry, that's a great observation. But just conceptually, even if you didn't get into the weeds of parking, and I think that's a good point, they're using, they want, they want to use the A in our vehicle to divide the land, and it's not appropriate because the frontage is a substandard.
Okay. All right. That's all I have for questions.
But he's got, he's got, does he say, oh, he said, does he say that Lot B is not a building lot?
He is, but Lot A is non-conforming now also. It doesn't make any difference that he's saying it's not a building lot. It doesn't have the.
Lot A, Lot A has 100, I thought, I'm confused. I thought, I thought the department report said that the, oh, no, the has to, because the front door, okay, the definition of frontage is where, if there's an existing building, it's where the front, it's, okay, I'm sorry, that's where the front door is.
Their address is 76 South Street.
Yes.
The frontage is on South Street.
He does have that, he does have the 107 on Warren, but that's not frontage.
Right.
Yep, so that's a good, good point on that, Larry, but it's, conceptually, this is not an A in our plan. So if nobody else has any other comments, I think we need to, I think someone, if someone wants to take action on this.
So someone needs to move to require a full definitive subdivision?
And deny that.
Oh, yeah, the most, I mean, do we, we can't make a motion to deny.
Yes, you can.
All right, motion to deny. Well, you, I'd rather, I prefer, we, this is, we'll explain this to you some other time about motions. You need to make, you need, that's the reason why the zoning board makes motions in the affirmative with the hopes that it doesn't prevail. You don't want to be making a negative motion. So you want to make a motion to approve with the hopes that it doesn't prevail. Motion approved and hope it does not prevail.
Okay, there's been a motion made to approve with the hopes that it doesn't prevail. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. A vote on the roll. Craig Peanut?
No.
Reggie Thomas?
No.
Tony Gonzalez?
No.
Larry Hassan?
No.
And Bob Pelagi is a no, so it's defeated. Thank you. Okay, so do we have any other, we have a lot release, you said, Pam, but we can take care of that.
I do, but you had voted to release that at the last meeting. He just had not recorded the documents at that time, and he just got me that information Wednesday. So, like I said, I'll take it home with me and contact you guys to stop by the house.
Okay, sounds great. All right, is that, would you say that does it for housekeeping?
It does, I had nothing else.
Wonderful, I appreciate that, thank you. Okay, so the first agenda item is a public hearing. It's a continuation of a public hearing, and this is a two-lot subdivision in 678 East Street, Brockton. And just to familiarize everybody, this is the project that goes Brockton into East Bridgewater, and the owner represent, the owner is Benjamin Carroll, representative is Mundon Engineering, so, and I think we have, oh, there they are. Good evening, folks.
Is there, is your entire team here, or are there people still in the attendees section that I need to move over?
Our entire team is here.
All right, thank you.
Scott Ford for the applicant as well.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, so would someone like to make just a brief, just to catch the board up just briefly? I know, I know one of the matters was, was resolving the issue with the court remand, so if someone, maybe Scott or someone.
Yeah, I'd be more than happy to. Good evening, members of the board. Scott Ford for the applicant, the Carroll family for the Knights Estate subdivision. So this has been before the board, I think this is the fourth or fifth hearing, they'll call me on the number. The last hearing, the concerns that the board had, had to do with the previous agreement for judgment and the ability to have the board and the applicant agree to amend that judgment. We spoke with the legal department, with the city, and came up with a, an agreed-upon document, basically agreeing between all the parties that we can agree to amend the judgment between ourselves. So I believe that issue's taken care of to the satisfaction of both the applicant and the law department for the city. Second, there was a question about detail for the underground utilities, which Gigi Mundon, our civil engineer, has added to the plan. It shows the detailed location within the utility easement, what's going to go there, and detail concerning the construction of those utility utilities, you know, to the standards of the utility companies. And, you know, we believe that the plan addresses all the concerns, and we would ask that the board vote, vote to approve it.
All right, thank you. Now, we have, thank you, Scott. Okay, so we've got, it looks like we were given a note here that we've been asked by the local, the local council to read into the record. I don't know if everybody got a copy of that, but it looks like she did this, it's about the 4:30, so Pam, would you, I don't mean to put you on the spot.
No, I got it.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. Saved my voice.
She said she has spoken with the city engineer, and she would like to make the following suggestion. Per the city engineer, the actual radius at which the pavement intersection is achieved must be shown on the plan of the intersection of the proposed road and East Street. A drawing of an angle point intersection at the road is not a radius intersection. And before we get into that, let me just read the rest of it. Tonight, the board may be approving a subdivision as shown on the submitted plans. However, nearly all the lots are located in another town. That town's planning board may change what Brockton approves. The applicant may also change their plans for that portion of the development prior to seeking approval, including building an apartment complex. For those reasons, I suggest that the board's decision include a condition that any future changes to the plan approved tonight, any future changes to the plans being approved tonight by East Bridgewater, including increases in intensity or density, must be reviewed and approved by the Brockton Planning Board before work commences. Any approval by the board must, and must be subject to an intermunicipal agreement, which would be a condition anyway.
Okay, did you, are you, are we all clear with what she's looking for there? I don't think anything is unreasonable. I mean, the language that she's using on the first point, basically, she just wants a minimum radius. It looks like she wants a minimum radius on the, on the curb line as it meets, as it meets East Street, and the magic number that you want there is 38. You want that, you want that, you want the radius of the curb to be 38 feet. Why 38 feet? Because that's, that's the accumulative width of the grass strip plus the, plus the sidewalk, plus the, plus the, plus the actual standing granite curb. It's the 38 feet, so you want, you want that, because you know, I don't think, I quickly looked in there, Gigi, I didn't see, you didn't detail the radius of, the radius of the curbs at the, at the mouth of the subdivision, did you? I didn't see it, if you did.
What we show on the radius is from, like, from curb to curb, edge of pavement is the radius that we show. So the grass strip and all that stuff is not included there, so.
You've got to, yes, to develop the minimum radius, the grass, I'm talking about the grass strip. If you look at your, if you look at the roadway cross-section, the typical city of Brockton roadway cross-section, okay? It's got a grass strip, it's got the, it's got the, I don't, I should open the sheet up again, I've got so much stuff on my table, but if you look at a typical roadway cross-section, it's got the grass strip, it's got the, it's got a sidewalk, and then it's got the width of the curbing, and that, that total width is 8 feet. How do we know that? Because it occurs on each side of the roadway, so 8 plus 8 is 16, minus 50 gives you 34 feet of paving, right?
Yes.
The magic radius that you want on the face of the curb is 38 feet. All you have to do is put 38 feet on the, on the thing. If you swung that together in the field, this, there was this talk about the possibility of there being a sidewalk built on East Street. So if you, you could actually fit that in the field, we can go over that some other time, but if you swung that together, holding the edge of the existing paving on East Street and the, before you set the, before you set the curbing, and you swung that together holding 38 feet, your radius would actually be in the right place if they ever did build, if they ever did build a sidewalk on East Street, your radius would actually be in the right place to receive a sidewalk on East Street. But in any case, they're looking for a 38-foot radius on the face of that. It's the only thing it can possibly mean. Anybody else have any other comments on it? That's all I got. And then, and then point number two, I guess, what's her concern there is that if we, if we give this thing our blessing tonight, and then you move on to East Bridgewater, and for some reason, you know, you change or somehow going forward, the portion of this project that's in East Bridgewater gets changed from single-family development to some other use, she just wants the comfort of knowing that you've got to come back to Brockton if anything changes. I think that's a reasonable request.
I have no problem with that.
Yeah, yeah, if there's a change in use from like, you know, apartments or something, I'm.
Yes, if you, if you leave the single-family concept, as my, I understand that we have no control over East Bridgewater, but what she's saying is, if you leave the single-family concept, because now we feel as though we have a density handle on what's going to go on the dead-end street, and you change that, and let's say you put up an apartment complex or something, she'd like, she'd like to be remanded back to Brockton Planning Board, which I, I don't think is unreasonable.
We're fine with that for changes, you know, for concept and density and, you know, single-family to, you know, all that, yeah.
Okay, then the other thing, the third thing is that, is that she's just, she's just acknowledging, I think everybody knows it at this point, that you need, you need an agreed-upon intermunicipal agreement between the two municipalities.
And Mr. Chair, there is some standard language for that that was taken out of the other agreement that will be rolled over into this agreement, and I can read what that is.
Okay.
So it's in the record, but the remainder of the approval, if you vote that way, would be standard conditions. But the developer agrees to seek an intermunicipal agreement for water services, Endosor, between the city of Brockton and the town of East Bridgewater. Approval of this project is contingent upon such intermunicipal agreement being granted by the city of Brockton. Developers to provide the planning board with proof of the recording of the plan, yeah, that's standard. I don't know why I put that in there. The portion of the roadway within the city of Brockton shall remain a private roadway until accepted as a public street in the manner prescribed by statute. A homeowners association shall be created to repair and maintain the roadway in common Same with streetlights. They become the, they're the responsibility of the property owner until the street is accepted by the city council. And the detention basin, although these are not in Brockton, so technically it doesn't make any difference, but that's standard language, that the homeowners association, or if they're on private property, is the responsible party for the maintenance at this point. As I said, everything else is just standard.
And then, Pam, just, Pam, just for clarity, is the language that you just referred to, does that get added to the plan, or does that go on the covenant or something?
That will go on the approval letter. So there's an approval letter, an agreement that will go to Tony Zioli.
Yep.
To start their appeal process running. These terms and conditions will be in there, along with all the other standard ones. Once the appeal period runs, you know, they have two, two towns that are tied together, so it's, you can't get one endorsement without the other, so. But yes, in, in normal circumstances, this letter, along with the covenant, would go to the registry of deeds, so eventually, yes, that will happen. That will go to the registry and be recorded.
All right. Well, do, let's see. Do the, so what are the conditions? Does any of the board members have any other comments or concerns, questions at this point?
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask a question?
Yes, sir, please.
If I, my memory is correct, there was a hydrant on the Brockton side. Is that correct, Gigi?
Yes.
Where is it? Now, I don't think we have a full set of plans, but where is it in relationship to the cul-de-sac that was formed in Brockton?
Mr. May, could you bring that sheet up? That, that, I don't know what page it is. Do you know what page it is, Gigi?
Yeah, I have it up. It's right at the beginning of the cul-de-sac.
Is it the utility sheet?
It's.
Right here.
Okay. Okay.
There it is, yeah.
Yep, very good, thank you.
Any other board members have any other comments?
No, I think, I think we've, we've run over this plan many times, and the developers have, have made the changes that we've asked them to do, so if we're at that point, I'd be willing to make a motion to approve.
Before you make the motion, are there, are there any, let's see, before he makes a motion to approve, Pam, so are there any, are there any conditions that want to be, that want to be blended into the motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
We held the hearing open, so there may be some that wish to be heard.
Yes, I apologize, that's right, too, this being a public hearing, I forgot about that.
So if there are any attendees who wish to testify, please use the raise your hand process, or indicate through raising your hand that you wish to be heard.
Yeah, I don't see anybody.
If you can't raise your hand, you also have the question and answer option at the bottom of your screen.
It doesn't.
I do not see any raised hands.
You don't have any written messages or anything?
No, sir.
Okay, can we, can we declare that portion of the hearing closed, then?
You may proceed.
All right, well, hearing no, hearing no further input from public input, I'm going to declare that portion of the, the hearing closed. Okay, so back to the concept of a motion. Do we want to, do we want to blend in any, any conditions to the motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve with the stipulation that any changes to the proposed, proposed plans in East Bridgewater be represented to the planning board and the other standard conditions.
Okay, could, could we include also, Craig, maybe, maybe the, the notes that came in tonight, the three notes from the city engineer? How about that?
I made my motion as it stands.
Okay, someone needs to, we want to include those other two points, though, Craig.
Somebody has to, then.
Amend the motion.
Amend the motion.
Why don't you just retract your motion and just, just include, include the three points that make your motion to approve, and then include the three, the three points that Mr., that the city engineer had called.
Can you repeat the three points?
Okay, just, well, the first one was to label the radius. First one was to label the radius on the, on the, on the proposed granite curb at the mouth of the, mouth of the subdivision, at the opening of the subdivision. The second one was to, was to, was that the requirement that the applicant notify, notify the Brockton Planning Board if there are going to be any changes, if there are going to be any changes in density to the East Bridgewater portion of the project. And the third is that they, is that they, that they file an application for a intermunicipal agreement. Those are important.
I, that's, that included my motion, would be, the, that they have to come back to us before any changes, and the, and the standard agreement for the intermunicipal agreements. That's already included in my motion.
Okay, so you've got, you've got the radius in there?
No.
I'll make a motion to amend the motion, to include the city engineer's comments, along with bringing back the plans if there are any changes, the subsequent planning board meeting at the other town.
Okay, that's what I'm looking for. Is there a second?
A second, that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. Okay, a vote on, a roll call vote. Larry Hassan?
Yes.
Okay, Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
Reggie Thomas?
Yes.
Craig Peanut?
Yes.
And Bob Pelagi is a yes. So voted. Now, now comes, I guess.
Security.
I'm sorry?
There's waivers.
Yes, there's waiver requests.
Oh, that's right. They've made two waiver requests, one for granite curb. One for granite curb. Which the engineering department has, um, is opposed to. And the other is waiver from the radius.
Okay. Discussion on the motion? Or either motion. So I guess we'll have to take them separately then. But let's take them separately. The granite curb. Uh, any discussion?
I don't think there's any way we can, we can waive the granite curb requirement. Um, we, we, it's the same thing we, we require everybody else. We can't, we can't waiver from that.
I agree.
I agree with that.
Is there a motion? Is there a motion to approve the, to approve the waiver of, of the granite curb with?
Motion approved in hopes it does not prevail.
Yep. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote. Larry Hassan?
No.
Tony Gonzalez?
No.
Reggie Thomas?
No.
Craig Pina?
No.
And Bob Pelagi is a no. Um, on that note, would you, would you please, uh, when you, before you bring the plan back in for signing while it's on my mind? Gigi, would you take off any reference to, uh, to Kate Card Burm? And also add a detail for standing granite because you've got on your detail sheet. Um, you show, and on your cross section, you show Burm and on your detail sheet, you're showing the detail for the Burm. So please revise that. And then the second agenda item is the, uh, they're asking for a waiver for lack of radius at the entrance. Uh, I think we all discussed that. If there's any more discussion on that, make waiver request.
Motion approved.
Second.
Who seconded that?
There is nobody.
Mr. Pelagi.
I didn't. Oh, I, I was looking for a second, but. Someone like the second? It's the chair. I don't want to, I don't want to second.
Second.
Okay. So you got a motion, the second roll call vote. Larry Hassan?
So are we, we're, when, when?
We're approving, we're approving. Yes, we're approving the, I believe.
Waiver of the radius.
Yes. Okay. Yes.
Didn't we make that a condition?
I'm sorry?
The different condition.
No, this is a waiver request. So we're asking, looking for, uh, your response to the vote, Tony.
Um, just repeat what the difference is between the two.
Oh, you mean the two, the two waiver requests?
No.
No, the waiver for granite curb.
No, no.
No, no.
Radius, the radius. We made the radius a stipulation, a condition, and now we, we are approving a waiver to a different.
No, no, the, the, the condition, the condition that that was part of the approval of the subdivision satisfies, satisfies the city engineer's request to label the radius to actually put the radius, the numerical value of the radius on the plan.
Okay.
On the.
Which is different than, 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 than
Oh, okay.
waiving the lack of radius at the end.
Thank you for the clarification. Yes.
So Tony Gonzalez is a yes. Reggie?
Yes.
Craig Pina?
Yes.
Bob Pelagi is a yes. Okay. So, um, what else? Now we got to go to, I guess we're surety and, uh,
Yes, surety. Did Bob cut out?
No, I did not. Um, so, uh, Mr. Scott, Mr. Ford, um, what, what method of surety would you, 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 you looking for cash, bond or covenant or? Uh, did we cut out? I mean, you could.
I'm here, I'm just asking the Ben.
Cash bond would be fine.
I mean, until you, and unless you get into lot releases, what you, what you, what you're, what you're on the hook for at the least is cutting into the road. So.
The road. Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, that's the, and then if you're looking for lot releases, then that's another. And they can change this, Pam, too, right?
It's easier to just put it under covenant at this point.
Put it what? I'm sorry?
It's easier for it to be under covenant at this point.
Okay.
The process.
I have no objection to that then.
Okay. See what covenant it is. All right. Well, is that, does that pretty much cover the administrative? Moving parts, Pam?
Uh, yes, it does. Yes, we are done.
Okay. Wonderful. Well, we appreciate your patience and, uh,
Thank you for working with us and all the great feedback and I'm sure this is not the last time you'll hear news on this project.
I know it's been a long road, but I think it'll be a fruitful project. I think it's, I think, I think you've got a good project going there, but good luck.
It'll, it'll, it'll look really nice. So thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
All right. Okay. So we're moving right along from, uh, let's see, those two are continued. So it's item number five is, uh, site plan approval. It's property at 383 Quincy Street. Applicant is Mike Mather. I think the, is the engineer on this one? Um, well, it's, it's a Good evening to Mike and to Azu. Are they there?
Yes, they are. Gentlemen, do you have anybody else, um, on your team that needs to be moved over?
Sorry, I was muted. Uh, Mike Mather Jr. here. John McCuskey is trying to get on right now, but, um, he's having an issue with Zoom on his phone. Um, so we do have him on speakerphone with us right now.
You need to, sure.
Yeah.
So somebody has a speaker, uh, or, or
Got a radio on or something?
Broadcast going on in the background. We need to have that turned off.
Can you hear them? Yeah, Azu's on.
Okay. Uh, good evening. Good evening, Azu.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, sir. Uh, would you, would you care to just walk, just basically, uh, give a little, a little thumbnail sketch of what the project involves? I know you've been to tech review and so forth already, but just give us a little thumbnail sketch of what the project in, involves. Can you bring that up on the screen, Mr. May?
Well, I, I first want to see if Azu has it.
Uh, um, I can probably call it from, uh, some of the, uh, emails that we sent. I, uh, I assume that your office, I guess, know what happens when we assume, but I assume that office has it set up.
So. Let me see, um.
Oh, and we assume that the applicant is making the presentation.
Okay. Hold on a second.
Hang on. I got it right here. Just in case.
Well, that's why he was the planner of the year, you see?
He may. He, he made that motion.
He never disappoints.
No. I don't think, though, that's a beautiful site plan.
It is. You know who did it?
Which page would you like me to go to, sir?
Okay. So, uh, basically, um, if you would go to the sheet, this one here is sheet C2. If you go to the, uh, uh, C4, that might, uh, have all the relevant information. Yeah. So we can, uh, walk with this sheet right here. Yes, sir.
Make that a little bit bigger.
You would center it, Rob. You've got to center it. There you go. Got to center it on the page.
I'm working on that.
Technology is a wonderful thing, isn't it?
Perfect.
There we go. That gets most of it out.
Yeah, it's perfect. Thanks, Bob. Appreciate it. You did, you definitely, you definitely earned your planner of the year award. You absolutely nailed it.
Thank you, but just remember I don't have a vote, so.
Well, but that, that tells you then that I'm speaking from the heart and I mean what I say. Okay? All right. So, uh, Mr. Chairman and members of the, what you have here. I believe, uh, Mr. Mather is on with us.
Yes, he is.
Yep.
So this is a project that has evolved, uh, over the last couple of years. Uh, it's a proposed, uh, um, 55 and older residential type of use. Uh, we, uh, met with the, um, uh, late mayor and we also met with the current mayor. And, uh, we obtained input, uh, from, uh, the planning department. And so this project that you're looking at is a site plan for the development of residential housing, uh, with onsite parking, sewer, water. Uh, we got to the conservation commission and, uh, received their order of conditions. Uh, basically what you're looking at as a plan that in was the building pretty much in the middle. It is a two-way entrance, one, uh, one-way circulation entrance, but a double parking so that you can pull in, that you have enough aisle, uh, aisle width to park and then to continue uh, in a northerly, westward direction to exit the property. Uh, we have two separate water lines, one for regular domestic use, which is labeled at two inches. It says at two inch W, basically that says domestic, domestic water. And then there were six inch separate line for fire protection service. Those have to be separated so that you have, you don't have a potential cross contamination. And there will be a backflow preventer in the building. Uh, they basically, right now, the, the property is totally paved for the most part with a, a small portion of it, uh, to the east. Where you will see individual parking spaces. And then what we have highlighted in the yellow, just so that will make it obvious, is the, uh, stormwater recharge systems that we have proposed to capture and recharge stormwater with an overflow provision that that are discharged into an apron before it makes its way to the wetlands. Uh, under the existing conditions, you have no stormwater treatment units. There are no runoff control. Uh, what you have here is a project that is designed to, uh, not only recharge the stormwater, but also the stormwater gets treated when it comes off the parking into, uh, what we call storm scepters. And then from the, from the storm scepters, the clarified water goes into the recharge. And then the excess runoff, and in terms of an emergency provision, then discharges into the apron before it gets to the wetlands. We have, we have identified areas for snow storage. We have proposed an, uh, location for dumpster on the, uh, what I call the south, near the southeast corner of the property. And, uh, and, uh, we have erosion control proposed around the entire perimeter of the project. And, uh, we have established construction sequence, uh, for the development of the site. The parking is adequate and it includes handicap parking as required by the architectural access board. Uh, as I noted earlier, we have, uh, we have a, uh, approval from the conservation commission with an order of conditions for the proposed activities that are within the jurisdiction of the commission. And, uh, we've also gone before the board of appeals. And, uh, we did receive, uh, the relevant, uh, variances uh, that would allow the project to go forward. And, uh, so, uh, I believe this project, well, we had a tech review meeting, uh, back in October. Uh, items that were raised during the tech review, uh, by the DPW, by the fire department. Um, we have, uh, completely addressed. And, uh, we're looking and praying for your approval as well. So that, uh, this project, uh, can get on, get on the way.
Very good. Um, all right. Does that conclude your presentation, uh, Azu?
Uh, it will. Uh, my wife, uh, uh, a very, very intelligent woman advised me a long time ago to try to be brief. I'm not listening to myself. Talk too much.
No, that, that's fine. We appreciate it. Uh, so, uh, while you have that up on the screen, uh, do any of the board members have any questions or concerns?
No, I've, I've seen this plan a number of times and, uh, they've made changes, added additional parking and, uh, they've done everything we've asked them to.
We've done everything, apparently they've, they've done everything that the CONCON in that the tech review has asked them to do. Uh, the planning department has recommended it for approval. This being a public hearing, is there anybody, uh, that is on the call that would like to be heard? Rob May, will see anybody that, that wants, uh, would like to be heard?
Um, let me stop share of the document for just a second. And if there are any attendees wishing to, uh, offer testimony, if you could raise your hand or, um, you can also submit questions through the question and answer segment. Attendees, if you would raise your hand. And I do not see any at this time.
All right. Well, hearing none, I declare that portion of the hearing closed. Um, I guess, um, I guess we're, there, there are no, there were no other recommendations on the part of the, uh, I don't, let's see, I gotta look at my sheet here. Sure, but I don't think, uh, uh, Risa, were there any other recommendations or concerns that you had relative to this project?
Um, no, the site plan satisfies the requirements for site plan approval.
Okay.
And I'll make a motion to approve site plan approval for 383 Quincy Street.
Second.
We've got it. We've got a motion and a second. Um, okay. Roll call vote. Uh, Larry Hassan?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
Reggie Thomas?
Yes.
Craig Pina?
Yes.
Bob Pelagi is a yes. Uh, anything administrative that you want to add, Pam?
Uh, can I just ask who seconded that?
Me.
Yep, okay.
So there was a Tony, Tony.
I did get that. All right. Hang, hang on, please.
Yep.
Um, no, they are all set. I'm getting emailed from somebody who's trying to get into the meeting, so. Um, but no, they are fine. There'll be a two-year time limit for completion, which is standard.
Okay. Does that? Would that, does that conclude that agenda item then?
It does.
All right. Well, gentlemen, thank you for your appearance. I guess you're all set.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And, uh, happy, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to you all. Stay safe.
My thank you. Same to you.
And we'll see you, we'll see you soon when we break ground.
Okay.
Okay. Have a good one.
Bye-bye.
Thank you. All right. So moving on to agenda item number six. It also is a site plan approval. It's property at 4 Main Street.
Mr. Mr. Chair, can you just, um,
Hold up for a second?
Off for one second.
Certainly. You've got somebody that's trying to, trying to get into the meeting?
I do. Um, Rob, I just, you.
Oh, email to me?
I just sent it to you because, yeah. I've sent that in the link and everybody else has tried to, been able to get in.
Who is that?
I don't know.
Um, hang on. Let me see.
Click sign in to join Zoom. Well, it says click sign in to join. I have to sign, click sign in.
Let me see if I can do this another way. Hang on a second.
What's the same link that everybody else is using?
Okay. I just sent another invitation to them, so hopefully that will work. Okay, I just sent another invitation to them, so hopefully that will work. All right, um, while we're waiting for that to come back.
Wait a minute, does it?
Is there anybody? Phil, um, are you, you're representing this case, so let me, um, did you just do, oh, there he is. I'm going to elevate him to panelists. Is there anybody else in attendees who is representing this case?
Attorney Sullivan?
Yes, how are you?
Good evening, yes, welcome. Is there anybody else with you or are you the sole participant?
Trying to get Steve Perkins on, but I'm having trouble getting my.
There's Mr. Perkins.
There we go. And maybe Jeff Perkins as well, if he's there.
That's Jeff Perkins.
There we go.
I do not see Steve Perkins unless he is Luke T.
No, he's not.
Okay, then I think it's just Jeff, that's fine.
I don't know. Let's go with what we got.
Okay, now, do you want about the other?
I'm gonna go check, check the email for whoever that was.
Counselor Nai Castro cannot get in.
Is she making, she's making an attempt to? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's what she just said. Do you want to send her the new link? I don't know why they can't get in.
Um, the only link I have is the one that's unique to me.
I've been sending the public link and that's the one that everybody's been logged in with.
Yeah, so I don't know why she hasn't been able to log in.
Can you send her the meeting ID?
Shouldn't need it, though.
If the link doesn't work, the meeting ID will be able to let her in.
Um, do you have quick access to that, Risa?
Let me look.
Oh, there's the.
It's on the agenda.
Yeah, I'm gonna copy that.
That whole thing is on the agenda.
The ID and the password.
Yeah.
Copy. My apologies to those who were waiting. I just sent that off to Counselor Nai Castro.
Here's another one, Rob.
Hang on just a second.
Says this meeting is for authorized attendees only. Click sign to join to sign into Zoom with an email address. That shouldn't be on this.
But it's weird because everybody else is getting in. But we assume everybody else is getting in.
There's somebody else that just got in.
The meeting ID didn't work.
I know, somebody else just hopped in.
Milton, is there, we've given you permission to talk. Is there something we can help you with?
Yes, I tried to call. I've been trying to get in since six o'clock. The, um, the meeting, uh, thing says the password is only for authorized users only.
Okay, well, you're in now. Sorry about that, sir.
Yeah, I got through, but it's a good walk-around on somebody, it's like IT people got me in.
Yeah.
I just don't know why it didn't, it's very troublesome.
Uh, yes, that is. Um, we've gotten that report from a couple of people. Um, are you here on a specific case?
No, I just wanted to see what's going on.
Okay, not a problem then. Thank you for joining us. Sorry about the inconvenience. Uh, Mr. O'Leary has stated that he had to enter his personal Zoom password to get in. Um, I do not know why this is having problems. Um, it may be because we changed the date and that may have screwed something up.
Right, but everybody else got in.
That is true. Um, I don't know why.
Using the same link. It's, nobody has a different link.
And I have not, I sent the link to Counselor Nai Castro, but I have not seen her join the, um.
I also cut and pasted everything and sent it to her. And I don't know who Great Guy is.
But is he Great Guy? Um, I cut and paste the link to him also.
And AH?
I did that also.
I don't know who they are.
Uh, so it's hard to tell if, well, nobody new has joined. Um.
Just that Milton.
Right.
Yeah. But everybody's used the same link to get in. Oops. There's somebody. Who was that?
Who was that?
I don't see.
It just went from six to seven guests, but I don't see who the seventh person was. Was the next person coming in?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Eric Diaz.
Oh, it's just joined us.
Eric.
Counselor Nai Castro just texted me and said that it keeps asking for a password.
Yeah, I got that too. You have to have a Zoom password.
Are you, are they clicking in on the right Zoom link? Is it?
Yeah, it sounds like they have panelist links versus attendee links.
I'm sending this, this is, this is the link that was on the agenda.
I just tried that, Rob, on my other computer and it brought me up to you need to sign into Zoom and have a Zoom account, or you can go through Facebook or Google, but um, it doesn't bring you directly to the meeting.
So it's not the public access then?
Yeah, for some reason it wants you to sign into Zoom.
I think that may be the new update.
But that's the link I sent you.
Yes, yes, but I found another link and got in through Rob, so I think I didn't have to sign in.
Well, I can send my link. They can all sign in as me.
Well, I don't know if they can or not. Um. Let me try something else. I'm gonna copy the invitation. That is the number that.
There is no public access from public notice agenda. Yes, there is. It's right there.
I'm re-sending the new link.
If it helps, to the extent that it helps you. Usually when I do these in front of various towns, you can click and it brings you right into the meeting. That didn't happen here. I had to put in my email address and then a password, like a personal password that I have for Zoom, which I had to reset because I didn't know what it was, because this has never happened before. I think that's what everybody's, or these people are experiencing.
Okay, I'm sending, I've sent out.
Can you see all the ones that have come in? There's one, two, three, four, five of them?
Five new people have come in?
Well, five altogether. No, no, five altogether that need that new link.
I've sent it to, um.
Counselor Nai Castro?
I just sent the Zoom link, but I just sent Y. Okay, well, there's the passcode right underneath it.
I know, I don't understand. But there's Joe Vargas. Great guy. And AH and Counselor Nai Castro.
I did Vargas.
Okay.
Oops. So I sent to AH, to Joe, to Counselor Nai Castro, to Menstric E, Inc. And if Counselor Nai Castro or those, one of those people do not log in, we may have to postpone this. Hang on, I'm gonna mute myself so I can yell.
So we don't, Rob?
I'm waiting to see if I get an answer back from one of these.
So I just get a text that said, Eddie, cannot get on Zoom. Is something going on, Angela? I'm not quite sure who Angela is.
Well, the problem, the problem is we, right now, we don't have public access to a public hearing.
People that are able to get in, did you guys have to update your Zoom? Did it make you get the new version of Zoom?
Well, somebody just got in. Oh, I see. Somebody just got in. Eric, Eric.
Hi, guys.
Eric?
Yeah, I'm here.
Were you able to get in using that link?
Yeah, I got in using the link on the agenda and I didn't have to update anything. It just let me right in.
And you didn't, you didn't require a password or anything?
No password, no, and I probably logged in about 10 or 15 minutes ago.
Well, maybe their computers and it may not be our link.
Well, we have to be certain that we have open public access because that's what it's all about.
Well, let's give it a few more minutes and.
Hi, I'm sorry. Um, I don't see Counselor Nai Castro just yet. Um, I'm gonna check my email one more time, but if she or somebody else from outside doesn't get in right away, we're gonna have to postpone, I think.
She texted me and said that he's really trying, but I, I don't understand why it's not coming on. That's what her quote was. And then this person called. Yeah, because I told her, said Rob sent you a new link, but then this, this person named Angela is texting me, telling me she can't get on Zoom and I have no idea who she is. And she's being very vague when I ask her who. This is weird.
Well, it is because other people have been able to log right in, so.
Pam or Rob or Bob, are we able to maybe go to the next agenda item and come back to this, or is that not proper?
Well, because we don't know, the problem, Larry, is that we don't know what the public wants to get into here, so we can't.
But if they keep trying to get on for agenda item six and come back to that?
Well, we, see, the problem is we have to be open to the public, even if somebody doesn't have an interest in a particular agenda item, because it is a public hearing.
Well, they can call in, though.
Yeah, Bob, I'm gonna suggest they could easily call in. I mean, a techno, technology issue on their behalf isn't really, shouldn't be.
So Counselor Nai Castro, Counselor Nai Castro said she tried calling in and asked for a participant ID number.
See, that's what we've got to be sure of. Is it, is it a problem, a technol, technology problem on the, on the applicant, I mean, on the, on the, on the, on the participants end, or is it on our end? That's what we have to be sure of. We have to have public access.
Yeah, and it's weird, someone named Angela keeps texting me about this and I have no idea who they are.
Can you ask her to identify herself?
Oh, I have, and she's being very vague about it. She says, oh, I met you last year, from Brockton this year.
Wow, sounds like you got, well, maybe we don't want to know.
Well, yeah, why is she emailing you?
How'd she have my number even?
You're a popular guy, Ed.
And the council said she's using the posted agenda.
Rob sent her a new link.
I've got a phone call, I gotta go silent.
I think we're gonna have to postpone.
Um, can you get into?
I was able to get in through my phone.
Without any sort of password or anything, Risa?
Yeah, I just went in.
Yeah, I just went into my phone. The meeting ID and the passcode that's on the meeting under the link, I just used that under the phone number and it just let me right in.
Dial the phone number? I'm not sure which one you would even dial here, so.
You would dial the first one that says U S. Yeah, three, one, two, six, two, six.
Six, seven, nine, nine. Seeing if you're, if it.
It wants me to enter my meeting ID followed by pound. What's the meeting ID?
The meeting ID.
Eight, four, four.
Eight, four, four.
Five, one, eight.
Five, one, eight, oh. Seven, two, five, three.
It wants my participant ID.
Passcode?
Yeah, it's the three.
Oh, nine.
No, it's actually the one below the ID, below the webinar ID.
Yeah, oh, nine, six, five, seven, one.
Is that the participant ID? That's oh, nine, six, five.
Seven, one.
Keeps asking me, enter your participant ID. Just keep looping that.
That's the number above, the three, four, zero, four, six, seven. Pam?
Three, four, zero, four, six, seven. Now I've entered the meeting.
He's in the meeting, so it.
Okay, so are we in agreement that we have public access then? Is that what we're saying?
You have public access by phone. Yes.
I can handle it perfectly.
I just tried it as well. I got in on the phone as well.
Okay.
Okay.
Rob?
Yeah, he can hang up now.
You know what? That's, that's.
I think we've all gotten in by phone pretty easily. It's not difficult to get in.
It's not.
Okay. All right. Now, why is, why is some selected view muted? Do we know?
You can unmute yourself. You should be able to unmute yourself.
Rob?
Yes, sir.
Are you com, so are you comfortable as well that we have public access then?
You should be able to drive right through and that is not happening. Given our litigious society. I got another email from Counselor Nai Castro.
Wow.
Does that mean she can't get on?
Did she try calling?
Sent me a shot of the, of the agenda and what she was entering.
Believe the last item is her ward. But nobody else has attempted to call in.
No, and, and nobody shows up as calling in either.
Well, Frank hung up.
Well, if, if we proceed, we should be prepared to be challenged.
I don't want to do that.
Rob, procedurally, what happens here? Does item seven?
Who is Jeff Perkins?
He's, he's with the applicant that's up right now.
Oh, he just, because he just dialed right in.
Yes.
So why could he dial in and nobody else can?
That's a good question.
Yeah, and I think it's weird this person Angela keeps trying to get me to call her and I'm not going to call her because I'm, I called it from my house phone. It just made a bunch of different noises, kind of.
Something's going on. Yeah.
Rob, can you answer?
Yes, I can hear you.
Procedurally, if we were to stop the meeting, is it just item six, seven, and eight that would need to be discussed at a future date?
Uh, potentially.
Yeah, I think we can assume that we had, we had continuity up till now.
Well, and, and, but, but before warned that the East Street subdivision was of particular concern to Counselor Nai Castro and Counselor Nai Castro has been one of the people that has not been able to get into the meeting, although we did.
But she knew she was, she knew she was going to be late for that portion of it and that's why she sent those comments also.
Okay, so that might be the, the issue. So I would think that maybe we finish Main Street since they are on and then postpone the remainder.
And do we know that no one else is trying?
How do we know? I mean, if we don't have public access, I mean, doesn't it apply to all the?
Susan's in.
Susan's in?
Yep.
Oh, there she is.
Okay. I mean, how do we go forward with any items? I don't need to belabor this, but how do we go forward with any agenda items if we're not convinced that we have public access?
Well, we, we do now.
Castro coming on, I, I think we're, we know the people can get on now.
Are you suggesting to complete the agenda then?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
Very good. Okay, well, apologize for the delay. Agenda item number six, site plan approval. It's property at Four Main Street. It's retail marijuana. Applicant is Atlantic Medicinal Partners. Representative is Attorney Phil Silverman. Good evening, Attorney Silverman.
Good evening and thank you for having us here tonight. So again, I represent Atlantic Medicinal Partners. I'm from the law firm of Vicente Cedarburg. We're seeking site plan approval for a retail marijuana facility at Four Main Street in accordance with Article Three, Section twenty-seven dash twenty-four point four of the zoning bylaws. And this applicant has a, a host community agreement that was executed back in September of 2018. It received a special permit from the Board of Appeals on July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty. There were a couple of conditions to that. It had to operate no earlier than eight AM, no later than eight PM, and deliveries had to occur between eight AM and eight PM. And also that there be off-street parking, which included twelve designated parking spaces. I'm going to get into that a little further as we get into the site plan. Is it okay if I share my screen so we can, I can show you the site plan? Right. All right, let's see. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Fantastic. Okay.
Wait a minute.
Wait, wrong plan.
No, and he's sharing his screen and I lost my screen, so.
Is that, is that?
I'm back.
That's the one that.
That's Four Main.
Okay, yeah, go ahead. Thank, pardon me.
You bet. All right. So the property is at Four Main Street, but the entry to the building is actually through the rear of the building. And, and if you can see Court Street, there's an entry into the parking lot from Court Street. There are no changes that are proposed to this, to the existing conditions. The only change, again, the same landscaping, same lighting, the only modification is that the twelve parking spaces that are nearest to Court Street are going to be reserved for customers of this particular business and there's going to be signage that specifies that this is for customers of Atlantic Medicinal Partners only. We will have our employees park in a municipal lot nearby, the, the Mayor Bill, Bill Carpenter garage. They'll be reimbursed for their parking. Again, we're just trying to maximize all the space we have. We have provided a traffic impact statement that shows that at peak hour you could expect twenty-eight visits from customers. Again, this is peak hour. And this can be accommodated pretty easily at this lot. Just by way of background, my firm is an all cannabis law firm. It's all we do all around the country. We represent a hundred different customers in Massachusetts and we've done this a lot. I have information for you that would tell you that the average time for a dispensary transaction in Massachusetts is between seven and ten minutes. To be conservative, we use fifteen minutes. So what that means is you can do, each, each space on the lot can handle four customers an hour. So our twelve spaces can actually handle forty-eight customers. And again, our peak is only expected to be twenty-eight customers. So we believe that there is plenty of parking that's, that's here. Again, there are other spaces in this lot. They're just not designated and reserved for us, but with those spaces, our busiest hours are expected to be Thursday evening, Friday evening, Saturday and Sunday. And those are times when these spaces, other spaces here are not likely to be used. These are, the other entities in this building are basically offices that don't use this, you know, during those busy times for us. So it's a good fit in terms of parking. Loading at this facility, we do deliveries from the wholesalers and this company itself actually has its own manufacturing facility that, that manufactures out in Fitchburg, Massachusetts. And the deliveries are about two to three times a week. They're at random times, unmarked vehicles. They're generally Sprinter vans. And we, again, randomized times. We don't want anybody to understand a pattern as to when we do deliveries. And your typical delivery, there's a lot of coordination between the drivers and the receiving operator here. That's just all according to Cannabis Control Commission rules. So that what really happens here is the company knows that the, that the delivery van is on the way. It comes in, the, it's unloaded and brought into the front door of the facility. It all in all takes about two to three minutes. It's a really quick process. Going to move now to the floor plan. I assume this looks somewhat familiar. I know this board has had quite a bit of experience with these types of facilities. So this facility has the same types of access controls that you're used to seeing. Customers enter through a main door. They have to show their ID the first time outside the door. They get let in through the front door. They have to then show their ID a second time to security before they are again buzzed into the main sales area. They're met by a sales agent there. The sales agent, you know, helps them make their order. They fill the order. The ID is checked for a third time at these point of sale stations that are inside and then the customer receives the order and leaves through a separate exit door out into the parking area. The company's security plan has been presented to the Brockton Police Chief. It's been signed off on. And the security, without belaboring again, because I know you've seen this, this is all mandated by state law. You've got exterior cameras, so we have a three hundred and sixty degree view around the building. Interior cameras in every single part of this building where marijuana is handled or stored and all doors and all windows. There's a primary alarm system. There is a backup alarm system in case the primary is compromised. We have a seed to sale tracking system. Every bit of inventory, inventory is barcoded when it gets in here and it's continually weighed and entered again into the inventory system. If something that weighed an ounce last week only weighs a half an ounce next week, your inventory system lets you know. You go back through the cameras, you find out who diverted that product and you terminate the employee immediately. No tolerance policy in Massachusetts for any kind of diversion of product. We also have a vault in the back here of the facility. That's where product is stored every night and then it's brought out again every morning to the sales floor. Twenty-four, seven, off-site monitoring of this facility by security and every employee here is background checked. The, the last piece that I want to cover for you, your, your bylaws ask for a transportation demand management plan. We call it an opening day plan. It sort of covers the, especially the initial period of time when there's, generally it might be a few more customers because of a curiosity factor. What we do in these situations, for the first month, we have a police detail in the parking area. It just helps us to keep customers orderly and, and then we also, for the first three months, have parking attendants out in that parking area. Just because it helps to get the customers to know where they're supposed to be, to, to put them into those designated spaces so that your customer base becomes aware of how it works here. We only generally do it for, for the first three months. If the police chief were concerned because it was particularly busy, we'd be happy to extend that as long as necessary, but to be honest, most of the facilities in Massachusetts these days, you're not seeing the types of crowds that you saw initially. I know In Good Health can get somewhat busy on certain afternoons. We've, we've sort of taken a look at how things are going over there. The reality is, is by the time this, this facility gets up and moving, there's going to be quite a few of these facilities in Brockton and we think all of the crowds are largely going to die down and you're not going to have any types of problems. So that's, that's the basics of our plan. And is there anything else? Any questions you have or anything else I can tell you?
I did have one question, Attorney Silverman. What is, what was your approximate timeline on this, on your development?
So a little bit depends upon the licensing process because we still have to go and get an actual license, but let's just assume for the moment that that were to happen in the next sixty days from the city. I, I think, you know, there's going to be some interior build out. There's still some additional inspections that have to be done. I think you're twelve months away at the earliest from seeing this facility open.
Okay, thank you. Any other, any other board members have any other questions, concerns?
I have a couple of questions. How, how far is this from the dispensary that's, that's right down the street on Pleasant Street?
I, I don't have the exact distance.
What is, what is the legal requirement between dispensaries?
Five hundred is the minimum, right?
Five hundred.
Yep, it's, I don't believe it's within five hundred feet though.
Okay, now, we've, we've approved a lot. What, what, what happens if, I mean, what if happens if there are no licenses in the city available?
So I know that's an issue and I've been having some discussions with Megan Bridges in the law office. There's, there's some questions about the, the status of licensing. What we're seeking, the way the zoning was set up is that it says twenty-five percent of your licenses are supposed to be in the C-three district and seventy-five percent are supposed to be in the C-two district. Right now, you only have one in the C-three district. It's that other one that you just mentioned, seventy-three to seventy-five Pleasant Street. So you're not at that twenty-five percent yet. So we've been operating and seeking to be the next one in the C-three district that would bring you up to the twenty-five percent that your zoning requires. So we think we fit in with your license. we think we fit in with your licensing and your zoning. That's something that we understand. We, we may get some pushback on, and we're prepared to deal with that.
And, and we also, in, in the downtown area, we, we required second floor. This is not second floor.
Well, actually, what I think your zoning says is, is it can't be ground floor. And this is actually below ground floor.
I, I, I want to, I want to interject something here. I just got a message from from Mr. May. Just, just updating me. I don't know if anybody else got the message. Unfortunately, the public does not have access to this meeting, according to Mr. May. And that being the case.
Correct.
We, we cannot continue the public hearing because the public cannot access. I'm not Mr. Technology, so I, I, I can't lend anything to that solution. Like, I'm not even aware that we can't, but I'm, I'm have to go by what Mr. May, the city planner, says to me, the chairman, that we do not have public access, and you can't have a public hearing without public access. I'm afraid.
I had hoped that once we saw that Councilman Castro could get in, that other people would be able to, but there's at least five other people who have emailed, ah, emailed me, and they are not able to get in. So I, I would respectfully request that we continue this.
Attorney Silverman, we gave you a preview of the questions we're asking.
That's certainly helpful. If, what I'm wondering, however, I, I'm concerned about, there, there's, there's some, a part of your process in Brockton requires sort of being timely or first and before other applicants. And there's been some time delay, and I'm not casting any aspersion on anybody. I understand that COVID's been in the way and all of that. What I'm wondering, though, is if there's a way to, to sort of schedule a second meeting without having to wait an additional thirty days for this.
Right, we're gonna, we're gonna address that now, sir.
Thank you.
You're not the only, you're not the only facility that's had, had delays. Other, other facilities have had delays as well.
No doubt. No doubt.
Oh, board members, if you could take a look at your calendars and see if Tuesday, the fifteenth of December.
That's the one day I can't make. If there's any way we could do it another day.
Then that is the day we are going to choose, the fifteenth. No. We can't do Mondays because of City Council and Finance Committee. Wednesday is Conservation Commission, so Thursday, the seventeenth.
Hold on a second. I think I've got, we've, let's see. Thursday, the seventeenth. Let me let me, uh, you said, Rob, you're suggesting Thursday, the seventeenth?
Yes, sir, I am.
Let me grab my calendar.
I think there may have been a Zoom security update between the time we've made the meeting and start, and then when we transferred the meeting over to a date. And that may have set things out of whack. So for those of you who are on and listening, I apologize for that. And those of you who are watching at home, we will be.
He had a, he cable had an issue. He told me.
He dropped out. Yeah. Oh, I, I see him there, but yeah, yes, Mr. Pelagi.
Okay, I just, just for clarity now, just if we move to the seventeenth, I just for clarity now, that's just to hear these three items. We're not going to add anything to the agenda now.
I, I, I don't think that we should, no.
We will not add new things to the agenda. My question to the board is, we don't know if people had wanted to attend the previous
Oh, yeah.
Agenda items. So we might just for.
I, I think that's very unfair.
Supporters.
Even though. There are people who have already been through the process.
I like to probably make a motion adjourned and then go into executive session. I think it's probably the best way to discuss this.
Well, we, unfortunately, we can't go into an executive session unless it was in the agenda and for a very specific series of activities, of which that, this would not be one of them.
All right.
Well, if you hear, I mean, if you hear from people that wanted to attend the previous sessions, agenda items, we could review them, I guess, but that'd be fair.
If, if the seventeenth works, we should pencil that in. And then first thing tomorrow morning, we will contact our law office and see what they have to say. And whether, you know, obviously, we have asked you, the board has asked your questions. It's just a matter of hearing other people, if there is any other testimony to be had. Worst-case scenario.
Does that mean, just for clarity, Rob, does that mean that this presenter would have to re-present this project?
In an abridged form? Yes.
Okay. And, and does that give you, on the administrative side, does that give you enough days for public notice for a meeting, a meeting next, next Thursday night?
Only need forty-eight hours.
Correct.
Wow, okay, I guess.
And we're continuing it to a date certain, so.
Well, I mean, let's poll the other members. Is everybody else comfortable moving to next Thursday night for these three items?
Yes.
Yeah, seventeen plus, yes.
Okay.
And I will send out new links to everyone.
All right, well, with apologies, Attorney Silverman.
No problem. Thank you very much. Appreciate all of your efforts.
I want you to know you did, you did a very, you did an excellent job on your presentation. I guess you'll be in good form for next Thursday. I'm sorry.
All right.
Okay, Rob, you want to, so we, motion to adjourn then, or do you have?
Well, motion to continue the meeting.
Motion to continue. Well, we want to continue. Do we want to continue this? I guess we want to.
Motion to continue Agenda item six, seven, and eight till the seventeenth.
I second that motion.
Uh, just for clarity, we're gonna, we're gonna continue, we, we're gonna continue the items six that we're halfway through then?
Yes, I would think so. And, and, and at the minimum, it is six, seven, and eight, and hopefully the others will, will get some clarification from the solicitor's office.
Okay, motion made and seconded to continue Agenda item six, seven, eight to the six PM on the evening of Thursday, the seventeenth. Roll call vote on the motion. Larry Hassan?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez? Tony?
I am on mute. Yes, sorry.
Okay, are you voting in the affirmative?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Reggie Thomas?
Yes.
Greg Peanut?
Yes.
Apologies, a yes. I guess, motion, motion to adjourn then.
Okay, again, folks, I apologize for the technical problems. We will send out new links. We'll post a new link on the agendas and make that also available to the counselors. And we will see you all back here on the seventeenth at six PM.
All right, thank you.
Good night, all. Go Patriots.
Happy Hanukkah, everyone.
Thank you.
Happy Hanukkah.